On Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, at 5:01 PM. I would ask Callie to not walk call. Um, I do not have any announcements for this meeting unless do you, Bill? All right. So we'll move then into discussion items. The first item is item 4.1, initial 2026 budget presentation for the capital improvement plan, equipment replacement and redevelopment borrowing plan. It's a whole cast of characters. I think that entire table almost. Carol, Judd, Bill, Alex and Reese.
Bill doesn't look like he's taking the lead, so I guess I will. So as you know, every year we go through the plans for the next year. So we do a capital project plan out five years. But the village board obviously sees it on a year-to-year basis. So as part of the budget, I'd like to show you what is coming and expected for 2026. The schedule that you have, I think they're working on pulling it up, schedule you had in your packet.
No, I don't have a schedule.
Oh, okay. Callie, maybe you guys can bring up just the
Can you get a skip?
The CIP list. There you go. That's what I'm looking for right there. So what we do for you is we lay out all of the infrastructure plans. That's what Judd will go through in a minute. And show you all the projects that they have planned, Public Works has planned. And then we have a handful of equipment needs. So at the top, you'll see fire and EMS capital items for $250,000. That consists of, I don't know, Greg, if you want to go into more detail, but the list I have is it's a concrete floor covering, some window replacements, and then a bathroom and decon room upgrade.
Yeah, so um, years back, we were gonna epoxy the floor, but we decided to, you know, get the 10-room addition at the fire department. So the floor covering would be similar to what PD has in their apparatus bay for floor covering. It'll prolong the concrete. As you can see, I took some pictures of the concrete floor. We got a lot of cracking going on. This will cover the cracks, prevent water from going down in the cracks and making them worse. So hopefully prolonging the concrete. And then the bathrooms are really outdated. This year, we renovated the PD bathroom by Chief's office and turned out great. We epoxied the floor, new paint, new toilet and fixtures, along with lights and ceiling tiles. And then the decon room is really dingy. This is where firefighters are supposed to go take showers after a fire and really dingy, cold. We're gonna epoxy the floor, put wall paneling up so we can spray off the walls. Right now it's drywall, so if you get that wet, you're damaging the the walls. Um, so we'll get new lighting in there as well. And I think that's about it for the fire department. Oh, there's three windows in offices that we would be replacing their original 1997 windows. We just replaced some in Chief Olson's and Captain Rito's office this year. So trying to slowly get some of these things done in the fire department side.
Okay, then next on the list, we do have some items for the police department. And these are things that I think Chief has already discussed. But if you scroll down a little bit on that chart in that red section there, the first four items on the list are all PD related. So it's two squad cars, some upgraded pistols, the stalker radar units and the laptops for the squads. So those four items make up the $148,000 under the police capital items. And I know Chief is online, so I don't know if he has anything more he wants to add, but I think these were all things he discussed already in his budget review.
No, that that is what we have, sorry.
So the next thing on the list then is general government items. We have $45,000 for Christmas lights, I believe.
So we'd heard um, there was some questions in the community about the the lights and maybe it's something we should look to upgrade. So we've got some initial ideas and have that factored into the somewhere in here. Uh, general government holiday lights, $45,000. There is an additional, yeah, I don't know, maybe you're gonna get to that.
The other 15,000 that's in there, so that line item is now 60,000. The other 15,000 that's in there is for two tabulators related to elections.
Just gonna update the PowerPoint with the the graphic to show 60, sorry. So I'm glad you had that.
I'm confused.
Go ahead. So the graphic I had, we had in our PowerPoints is 45,000. That was actually upgraded to 60 because the Christmas lights is 45, but then the elections, Callie, needs a couple of new tabulators that total $15,000 total. So that number, it's wrong. It should be 60,000.
I was trying to figure out Christmas lights and elections and I was like, how?
General government items.
They're just lumped together under, yeah, general government. Okay. Then we get into the actual infrastructure list. So are you gonna take over there, Judd, and walk through those items?
So we've got some we have various park projects we have set up for scheduled for next year. We should be able to get three park projects done, Conservancy Commons. That's a rehab of the existing park that's there. So the splash pad is 10-plus years old. It's starting to have failures in into it. Um, and then there's a newer component we would add to that, a lower playground. So there's limestone retaining wall or sandstone retaining wall that's there that's that's disintegrating quite a bit. So we'll have to remove some of that. We rebuilt some of that, but we may be able to make a play structure out of that. So there's the upper playground that you could facilitate getting down to the lower section as well with an additional playground component. So that's one of those things. Shane O'Donnell Park is mostly completed. There's some new additions there. Um, and then River's Turn is a brand-new park. So River's Turn, we can use park impact fees for. The other two we would have to include for borrowing purposes because we can't, park impact fees that we collect are only for new parks or new amenities added to parks. So we could potentially do something at Conservancy Commons and Shane O'Donnell using that. But a majority of those costs are gonna be, have to come from borrowing. Same with Veterans Park Parking Lot, that pavement is failing a little bit and we often have we wanna make sure that's in a good condition for folks who are coming to Veterans Memorial Day celebrations or whatnot. They not celebrations, Memorial Day events, that they have a safe place to walk. Uh, the Trailside Pavilion uh, needs a new roof, so we're gonna be looking at a steel roof. They called it single seam? Standing seam, standing seam roof, so it'll last us a lifetime with a steel roof. The AC storage, we wanted the, we wanna expand the storage out of the athletic complex. That was a little bit of a bump out there. And then we've got 20 miles of, 24 miles of trails in the village. We did a half a mile of trail upgrades a year. That would be 48 years to get through all the trails, right? And we have a number of trails that have already started to show wear, right? And we've proven our guys can do that work, so we're planning to do that some more. Liberty Land, we had budgeted 60,000 and think we did that for just over 20 ourselves. So um, by doing that, we can save the village quite a bit of money. And then the library, if you're familiar with the north edge of the library, there's a garbage surround that's kind of in the middle there. We were gonna move that. We talked with Brightspeed, they own the building there that we could tuck that up against on the north end and that would open up that section for the library. We had plans to maybe do some additional things in there. So down the road, a couple of years later, we can add some sunshades and make that a more viable open space for the library or the village to host other events there. So those are some park projects that we have coming up. I'll let Greg talk about all the street projects.
Uh, next year for reconstruction, we try to do one reconstruction project a year. That's replacement on the utilities, new curb, asphalt and road base. Also, that would be Acre Parkway from Main Street to Seminole. Um, and then we'll be looking at resurfacing projects, Baki Drive, Bassett Street, Stokely. Those are all in the North Industrial Park. Um, and then which will finish out uh, the North Industrial Park for resurfacing all those roads. Uh, Seminole Way resurfacing from Mohawk to Old Indian, that road's deteriorating quickly. North Cleveland Avenue, there's just a small section on top of the hill that needs to be resurfaced from Yahara to Park Avenue. Um, and then Stream Bank Restoration and Yahar River Restoration, work with Quarkus. So these are kind of those little sections of roadway that we're looking at doing, Seminole. That's acre reconstruction. There's Bassett, Baki and Stokely. And then North Cleveland. And
Can I?
We got, oh.
Question.
Yep.
Um, when, can you remind me if when we've got Venburn in the schedule?
27.
27, thank you.
And if you haven't heard, Home Street's gonna be in 28.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Jim.
Acre or uh?
The Seminole, you're saying you're going to Old Indian and then you have Acre Parkway going to Seminole. So there's a small piece of Seminole Way between Old Indian and Acre Parkway.
Yeah, that was done.
We should do that, but.
Yeah, I believe that was done um, not too long ago, so it's a lot newer asphalt there. So I didn't wanna, I mean, we could definitely just mill and overlay it. Just though it's all new, but yeah, we're kinda going off the Pazer Radiance in the condition of the roadway too. Uh, water project, so Acre Parkway is, we're gonna be replacing the water main. We'll have impact fee study. We don't have a price on that yet. I think we have to go out for bid for that. And then well seven, test well on Innovation Drive and Autumn Blaze. We got a test or a well site there, so we're gonna drill a new well and see what the water quality is. And then Williamsburg Roundabout will have some water main. Uh, moving water main around there to incorporate the roundabout. And then sewer projects, Acre Parkway, obviously, and then Williamsburg Way, Roundabout. And then stormwater will have Acre Parkway. There's a ton of stormwater there. And then Stream Bank Rehabilitation. There's the well, there's the roundabout. And then
So we have a handful of TIF projects slated for next year, so that Peterson, Williamsburg, Roundabout is illustrated in the picture before that. This'll be, this intersection will be upgraded to a roundabout to facilitate easier transitions through there. If you know there's a roundabout just south of 19 here and Williamsburg Way that's been functioning very well, so we wanna replicate that here. Now's the time to do it before further development occurs here in Prestajacamo. Whenever that might wanna come online, it's all set to go for future development. And then in, that's tid 7. Tid 9, we've got a lot of activity. There's a traffic impact analysis that's being conducted for the year. That factors in all the development that's currently, that we know of, including Buc-Ee's, and then forecasting out additional development that may or may not come from those things. So adding all those things in, that's a good six months to a year timeline for a full DIA study, Bill.
So I wanna clarify this traffic impact analysis study primarily focuses over on Hickory Lane in that segment as we are within the Taxicum and District Plan. We are budgeted in that to improve Hickory Lane as a main corridor through that section in the future. Uh, you'll see the the mounts here for the sanitary line have coast circle, Green Acres Lane and or South Road off of Green Acres. Those are all identified in the Taxicum and District Plan. Now, none of those will happen unless there's development. We have a, we have it in the budget to provide the opportunity to be able to move on those quickly if need be, but we would not, if there's no development agreement in place.
So we work with Veerbecker to get a high estimate number in here, right? We're not, um, so the sanitary line for EFCO, we have it, we know where that's gonna where that will go and what that should be pretty close to the cost. Green Acres Lane, um, that's a pretty close estimate. There's some elevation change that may need to occur there depending upon future plans of Hickory. And then there's a north-south road off of Green Acres and where that goes could dictate the total overall cost of that project, so. Here's the EFCO Circle sewer extension, so you know, here's EFCO. There are multiple buildings that sewer would connect and run up here, Cross Highway V and then and just a little north of Holiday Court. If the um, if the development should dictate that this goes forward, that would be what we were doing here, so.
Where is Holiday Court? I'm sorry.
Holiday Court's the one that runs behind Arby's, the hotel, Taco Bell, Burger King, all that.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem. It's the de facto uh, detour route when there's, when Vienna's had some issues here, there's people take that through Quick Trip and then Holiday Court and then back down Morrisonville Road. It's kind of the detour through there.
Yes.
Can you remind me on that, that area north where that would be ending at? Right now, there's not sewer and water, correct?
There's, there's water that runs through here. It runs up this way and then somewhere up just above here runs, huh? Oh, is it right here? Runs right across this way over to there, so the water loop.
There is, so there is water, but what about?
There's not, Village does not own sanitary sewer over here yet.
Okay.
Vienna has some that's there and then Morrisonville has a forest main that comes down Morrisonville Road that ties in. We've had preliminary discussions with Windsor about if they'd wanna connect to ours, they probably, they seem amenable, but that's a whole
Okay.
different level that we have, that we don't have conversations with.
Yes, Bill.
Will there be impact fees assessed at future development in that area?
Yes, so we have impact fee schedules that I think the board passed.
Well, that they'll recover the costs or a good portion of it, good.
So, so our approach with the sanitary lines and the roads are similar to what we had for the Hickory sanitary line. So what we would do is is secure it with assessments or impact fees. And then on top of that, then have the Taxicum and District cover it too.
So say Quick Trip and Arby's are all connected to Vienna, correct?
Correct.
And they have a failing line. And if they choose to hook up to us, they'll get a hefty assessment, correct?
Well, that's, that's dependent because I, I don't know if we'd be able to, well, I guess at the end of the day, it's, it's a call for the village board to make. You know, is it something that we wanna assess to all new development or existing development and new development? It depends on where you are in regards to seeking that those current businesses jump onto our line versus staying on Vienna's line.
That's a, that's a considerable expense.
Most of those businesses, I would suspect if we were to say, hey, you're gonna have this assessment cost, would probably say we're just gonna ride out, staying with the Vienna side, right? Which is coming on to ours. We have instant revenue that's coming in. They're already existing. They're already, it's already been planned for there. Typically, the, when there's extensions like this, it's for the newer areas. The existing stuff can add on and it's not as impactful.
Sure, though.
You want me to jump into the corner replacement stuff? Okay. And most of the stuff I think we talked about in our regular budget that we shared with everybody, but um, here's one of the street trucks that we replaced. Truck 13 has over 112,000 miles. We'll sell it at auction. Each of these boxes, these are stuffed filled with everything that they might need when they're out on the road, so they don't have to come back to the public services building and grab what they need and go. So it's a very specialized truck, but again, it makes us much more efficient when we're out in the field doing that work. We have one message board. I don't know if you've seen it. It's on, currently stationed on Main Street, talking about the Highway V, Main Street intersection closed. We could use, what's that? Oh, that one's Windsor's? Or is ours deployed? Well, we're in V, so we need a second one, right? With varying construction projects. So we can use this and then obviously if we should reciprocate back with Windsor, they, we've got a spare one to set out for that. So utility truck 16, similar to the streets truck, again, specialized component box to it. This is over 97,000 miles. Again, we'd sell this at auction. We talked about the side-by-side with a plow accessory that'll replace these bobcat brutuses, which are aging out and they're actually discontinued manufacturing them, so they're hard to even come by parts. So our superstar mechanic Tim is doing everything he can to keep these things running as long as we can, but we see a sunset coming, so we're gonna start to see if these side-by-sides will do the trick for us in the coming years. They're great for getting off on the trails, plowing those and then getting off-road when we have to get into some people's backyards for televising. We don't have to run it up with big, heavy equipment. We can get back there with a little side-by-side. Then we have our yearly trade-ins. There's two tool cats that we trade in, a skid steer and then scag mower that we replace out. So we never have any issues. They don't rust out in one year, but by staying ahead of them because of the salt and they're in the winter months, we're maintaining our, our equipment well. Um, and then the mowers, we're out quick with them on a mowing the grass acres that we have to mow every year. Um, swapping out those skags every other year helps us without having downtime because we don't get the grass mowed. We're in violation, so. So here's all those costs laid out as we have them. Um, and again, there's estimates of potential trade-ins or selling at auction prices that we have. We, we base the trade-in, we base the, the offset on what we would get from a trade-in, what was given to us by a dealer. But every time we've gone to auction, we've actually outdone those trade-in numbers. So we anticipate these will probably come down a little, but try to err on the side of caution. Back to you, Carol.
So that goes through the list of everything that's on the schedule. One of the things that we also do every year is try to show you if we have revenues from any other sources that will help offset some of these costs. So in the green box titled revenues, we do show that we intend to use some park impact fees that have been collected in the past to cover some of the costs. And then we do have some money on hand because you guys have approved letting us transfer some excess funds from prior years into Fund 400 to help cover equipment so that we don't have to borrow for that. Because we typically borrow on a 10-year schedule and some of those pieces of equipment don't even last 10 years. So we're trying to use the funds we have to reduce what we have to borrow. So we are anticipating using funds on hand for that.
Okay. Other questions, Bill, and then Jan.
Yeah, circling back to the Christmas lights, they're recently three or four years old.
I think 2018 is our best, that's the one we got those last Christmas lights, so there's seven.
I really enjoy Christmas, but some people have said they look like palm trees. I was kinda wondering what they look like. There, there is any color in, but is there any, and you know, their lights, you know? People don't realize how expensive they are. Is there opportunities for the community to donate? Because you have people that say, oh, I don't like them. Well, what do you like?
Sure, we could set up any sort of fundraising mechanism for those as well as whatever the the board wants to do. We could, Stacy might have some ideas for sponsorship. I did think, suggest we might make a fun voting out of it for the community, right? We could put up varying options and say, which of these do you like, right? We could vary. We have about 40, a little over 40, 42 places, poles where we have holiday lights that we hang. So it's, you know, at a thousand dollars a piece or a little over that, it can add up pretty darn quick, right? So we could do a variety of different ones, so they're, each pole is slightly different. Then there's some that are 700 bucks and some that can be 1,200 on them, so.
Or even a corporate sponsor, you know, local business and have a little sign, innocuous, you know, remnants jewelry, you know? It, it, I would have no objections to that. I think the businesses like the Christmas tree parade over here where the sponsorship is very popular.
All right, good idea, Bill. Thank you. Um, I will say that I think that's the one issue I have gotten a lot of calls on regarding things and holiday lights. And I think some of it's nostalgic because there used to be a lot more lights in the village when there was more of a town center over by Commerce and, and Main, et cetera. But people do like additional lights. So Jan.
Going back to the park projects, uh, all the individual lines, that all makes sense to me and those figures look, I think, fair. But I had a question about the Conservancy Commons, Shane O'Donnell and the River's Turn parks and that lump figure of 1.3 million. Do we have a breakdown per park? And do we have any quotes at this? Do we have actual quotes on things?
We have opinion, probable costs from the designer, but that's where we got the 1.3 from. So I wanna say Conservancy was five or 700,000. We'll try to get it up. I can guess, but I might be wrong.
Okay. I know that they're, they are really neat park plans and they're nice. I just am bringing this up because I've had a lot of residents for some reason, all of a sudden looking at that figure and then adding up the others and it's like, where's all this money going? But things are expensive.
Conservancy was the most, 530, Shane O'Donnell, 320, River's Turn is 408. And these are the top three that have been voted on so far. Voting continues to the end of September for all the parks, but these are the top three parks right now.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, and they're blowing everybody else out, all the other parks out of the water.
Where is Shane O'Donnell?
It's off of River Road, Chapel Green area.
Okay.
Thanks.
Could be wrong, but I do think all those OPCs were in the May Public Service Committee meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
I can't remember if that was after the packet went out or not, but it should be.
I'm sorry, Miss App. What was?
I, I believe all those OPCs for all of the park projects should be in the May.
They were, now that you mention it.
Yep, so if people do wanna reference those, they can actually see the breakdown for every single park.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and we took the high estimates for, for these projects. So depending on what amenities we go with, it could be cheaper, possibly.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Jim.
I might wanna talk about the different vehicles. You're proposing to replace two of the trucks and I think you said there's two of them at that type that you have, is that correct?
So we got So we got. One streets truck that's like that. And we've got two water trucks that are similar to those. So there's a total of three trucks, but two are water utility, which they have the most tools. So they gotta go out in the field and do a lot more. Stuff underground and in houses. The streets truck is. You know, they work on treat signs, so they got nuts and bolts and wrenches and.
Well, I guess why I bring it up, I just wonder if there is a reason why we're doing two of them in one year rather than doing. Say one and one. Is it just? I'll let you.
Just the way it falls. We should have what we did in two thousand thirteen, instead of purchasing another truck. We just moved that. That was a water truck. And we just moved that to the streets truck for a few years, just to kind of work with the budget. And it's starting, that's the wear and tear. Now, and then the two thousand sixteen one is at the ten year mark this year and. It's starting to see a lot of wear and tear.
Thank you. And then the one additional question you got the, I call it a variable message sign.
Yep.
I question how much we use that. So I just know as far as the DOT goes, we generally contract that out and it's. Seems like it'd be less expensive, at least my interpretation of how often we use it, but maybe you use it more than I think.
So yeah, I know the PD's used it for events. We'll use it for events. We'll. And we wanna use them more for our construction projects. And we're pretty limited with just one. I'd like to put them on either side of the project. So, you know, if somebody doesn't drive a certain way. They'll see it at one end or the other. I think getting the message out ahead of time that there's a road closure, if we have to, it's a lot easier for more people to see that. Than just one. I think we would utilize it a lot.
Okay.
And can you put on not only road clothes, but when it'll reopen, you know, three weeks from now, so my phone stops ringing.
Yeah, we couldn't. We can put all sorts of messages on there.
You can predict the weather.
Wow. You could put the date up with a question mark behind it.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Anything else anybody wants to share? Alex, you were quiet. You didn't have.
Those trucks take a beating. They they have hundreds of pounds of equipment in them. They go on unpaved roads. They tweak, they turn. The chassis go this way and that way and. It it's not like driving on the boat all the time. Fully loaded, the springs wear out. Like I said, the chassis gets tweaked and they get old pretty fast.
Yeah, we do. We do plow with these trucks. So, I mean, that is hard on them too.
Thank you. Bill Chang. Alex, did you have anything?
The only thing that I'll add, which I think is probably reflected in the total borrowing amount there. Would be the potential three and a half million for the redevelopment project that the CDA is undertaking. That number hopefully will be less than that, as we're kind of exploring a number of other funding sources, but that's just something to keep an eye on as well.
Thank you. Bill?
That was that was what I was gonna add.
All right. Well. If everybody is done with questions, I thank you. That's that's very helpful to have this document for our budgets and to understand what's going on. We will stay tuned in case there's more. So also in your packet was review of Village of DeForest budget policies. And this is here for discussion items. It's it's not in the regular meeting where we'd make decisions. But I think it's here to get questions and for us to be able to ask questions on on the budget policy. Carol, do you wanna share anything?
Sure. So this is a list of policies that we go through every year as part of the budget and we sort of reapprove them. So if there are changes that you want to make, now is a good time to be thinking about that and make sure that we update them. As you see fit before we approve the next year's budget. I went through and just kind of picked out a few highlights in these policies that I think are just. Kind of overarching ideas that kind of fit through all of the policies. For the most part. Our our big plan, the policies are really designed to encourage a long term perspective. And to enable a stable level of services and avoid property taxes fluctuating every year. So that's really kind of an overarching idea that we try to build into all of our policies. And we emphasize a lot on making sure we keep the bond rating at a at a high level and that we. Minimize the use of debt where we can. So obviously there are needs. There are good reasons, good strategies to use debt, but we do try to limit it where we can. One of the main things that we did talk about recently, we did update recently was the. Undesignated fund balance and how much we want that to be. It's, I think, previously had just set a minimum of fifteen percent, but then we kind of talked about. Looking at it more as a range. So we wanna keep a minimum of fifteen percent, but we don't necessarily wanna go too much over twenty five percent. Because at that point, it it seems as though we're holding money that maybe could be used for better purposes. So we now are trying to keep it within that range and we've been inside that range in the last few years since I've been here. So. We've been doing a pretty good job of maintaining that range. And part of that is at year end, when we go through and look at our results for the year. We have taken the opportunity to to use some funds that we had available and put it towards like the equipment replacement program. So that's one of the ways that we've been putting some of that money to good use and maintaining that range. We have policies that talk about if there's gonna be any kind of carryover. So if somebody budgets for something and then they can't get the item they were budgeted to get. You guys can approve carrying that over so they can purchase that item the next year. We talk about commitments of fund balance for specific projects or purchases or purposes. And again, that requires board approval. So we we bring a lot of these ideas back to you for approval, but it's in the policy that it's an option. So again, that's a good way to utilize whatever leftover budget happens to remain at the end of the year. We also go through, we've just talked about some impact fees. We go through ways that we can produce revenue that will help. Take the burden off the taxpayers. So we look at impact fees. We look at recreational programs. We charge fees for those programs. We have park fees, building permits. There are all kinds of different ways that we can bring in. Fees more for usage and take that burden off taxpayers. So we obviously look for those opportunities where we can. And then obviously utility rates are looked at annually for their adequacy. So those are, again, just some of the overarching policies that we have in place that we know we need to look at those ideas and. Keep those up to date.
Rebecca?
Question related, because I think it might impact this. I'm not sure. I've heard recently in the national news, some stuff about the housing. And something about, well, the administration is gonna. Mandate reducing fees and stuff like that. Have you heard anything about this? And like impact fees and stuff like that to open up. The ability to. Create more affordable housing, but at the same time, I don't know how that would, if if that actually happens. How that would affect us as a village. I can see lots of nasty things happening from that. Can't say I know.
Yeah, I know. I know that there's some talk about it. We won't know what. The parameters of the policy is gonna be until it actually gets written. I do know that in regards to. I think transportation fees, impact fees, sometimes those are challenged in court. And so where we utilize impact fees, I think we have to be. Very cognizant of how we are utilizing it and for which projects. There's always going to be, I think, policy debate as to where do you use. Impact fees versus assessments versus overall taxing and rates. And versus other opportunities. So depending on what you use to collect as revenues. We've seen that also impacts how we, you know, impact fees will impact how we set our rates. You know. So it's. In short, I don't know what's what's gonna happen in regards to that and whether or not there's gonna be, you know. Usually an unfunded mandate that comes down. You know, with this administration, we just don't know which way they're gonna go.
Yeah, I guess I would just. I'm sure you will do this because you're very diligent on this, but I'd love for you to kind of keep an eye on. That information so that we can be as proactive as possible. If there is the potential for some unfunded mandates that we're gonna get stuck with. So, which ends up being the taxpayers. So I just wanna try and smooth that over as much as possible because. I just really hate those unintended consequences that affect our taxpayers.
Thank you. So I encourage you guys to read these policies. And and to get to Carol with questions or other other things you want addressed. So it can come back to the board. And to try and do that as soon as you can. So she can come back to us in a timely manner. Thank you. All right. Moving along, we're gonna move to department updates. Bill, administrative update.
Yeah, just thought quickly, we're we're setting up meetings to talk about budget. I think there's two of you in which I haven't had an had the opportunity to meet with yet. So check your emails. Please send me your availability. I think you should know who you are. And we'll get something set up and go from there.
Thank you. I would also note while we're doing updates here, I've noticed board members putting on sweaters, socks and other things. Because it's getting really cool in here. Yeah. Just thought I'd mention it. Five point.
Greg's going to get a burn barrel over here.
Campfire in the middle. Carol, do you have any other finance update? All right. Police Department Chief Olson.
Yep, just one thing. This is a reminder, next Thursday, September eleventh, from five to seven P M is our National Night Out Celebration in Firemans Park. It's our family fun night. I'm gonna ask Callie to post a quorum notice just between the board, if you show up, and our police commission and other boards and commissions that may be there. So I'll ask her to do that. But look forward to hopefully another great turnout. We generally do very well with ours. We've got a great night of. Community celebration planned with a lot of different activities and different things for people to see. So we hope to see you there.
When is that?
It is a week from Thursday, so it's September eleventh from five P M to seven P M in Firemans Park.
It's a CDA meeting. That's what you and I were thinking.
And a Packer game.
You have a Packer game?
There's one. Perfect timing. I think they can get it to the Packer game.
All right, guys, we got it. There's always things. Let's move on. Judd, Public Services, anything?
I'm sure I've gotten every call you've gotten on the roads and probably some more than that. We are working as diligent as we can. Some of those road projects are ours, others are not. And we can only control what we have in our control. And we don't control the weather. We're supposed to get an inch of rain tomorrow, which will probably set us back a little longer on Highway V. Unfortunately, but we are working as quickly as we can. That being said, the lights down on fifty one worked fabulous. It's a overall well needed improvement. Long overdue in the town of Burke, the other section of Pepsi Way, back towards a quick trip that's on nineteen. That's gonna be done. So that is a road construction project that's coming up. So all that new Pepsi Way traffic should go. Towards fifty one, once that project commences. And I think they should be getting underway here pretty soon in the the town of Burke for that section of Pepsi Way. Otherwise, most of our other projects are. On schedule and should have. All wrapped up by October. If you wanna hold me to a date of the end of October, but hopefully sooner than that.
But that's helpful to know. The other thing I was gonna ask, when you look on Engage DeForest. It doesn't give start and stop dates, does it?
We don't. It's hard to give a stop date. I mean, we we give a start date, a general idea, but it's we're kind of up to the mercy of the. Like we leave the bits when the bits go out, we leave it open ended so they can kind of start when they need to. We do have a hard stop typically when we wanted. Highway V, we would have preferred to have done before the school year got started, but. It's the nature of that project that we did to how it lined up. We couldn't get it done that fast, so.
Sure.
We did get our first set of bids back for the Stream Bank Rehabilitation Project. Very favorable bids. We'll be bringing that to a future board meeting for you all to approve that contract. So there'll be phase one and phase two, which will be done. But that won't happen until next year because we got all the drought in the river, which is good news, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Colleen.
Did you get the tree trimmed over there by River Road and Innovation Drive that's messing with the vision of the stop sign?
We just, I looked at it today. The email, the the message that came in said conservation in river and I didn't know where that road was. I figured it's innovation. So I drove by it. I did see there is, we had put stop sign ahead signs out, so there is. Advance warning that there is a four way stop there, but we I did have Nate look at it today and we'll be making determinations on what needs to happen if it's. A full tree trim or we might even need to take down those two smaller. I think there's some sort of crab apple trees that. Are precluding that stop sign that we might unfortunately have to take out, so.
That's definitely interfering with the. Site sign.
Thank you. Community Development Update, Alex. Administrative update, Callie.
Today was the first day for in person absentee voting. We had, I believe, forty two voters. Come through today. The other update is last week I was at the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association Conference in La Crosse. So that's why I was not here. But I just wanted to thank you for approving that in the budget and giving me the opportunity. To continue the education that is available for me.
And we have a certified clerk and that's important for the village. So thank you for going. All right. Administrative Services update is Callie. So Recreation, Community and Enrichment update is Reese.
Yeah, so we have our, I believe it's our sixteenth annual Yahar River Fest is a Saturday. At Conservancy Commons Park. So that's from twelve to four. Hard to believe it's sixteen years, but we'll have our. Duck race again, fishing tournaments, backyard bass, FFA will have a petting zoo. We were able to purchase four hundred pumpkins from one of our farmer's market vendors here, so it's kind of nice to be able to kind of. Keep that here with someone who's also doing our our market. Press Unlimited will will be at the event as well this year. Face painting, rock climbing wall. I think I've I've covered most of it. Food carts.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
All right. Historically, that's been a pretty well attended event, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think every year that I've been there, we've had over a thousand people at the event, so.
Good. All right. Well, with that, if there's no other business to come before. You're dancing. All right. If there's no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. We are adjourned at, what time is it? Five fifty. We'll take a ten minute break. And come back. Opposed, we are adjourned at, um, what time is it? Five fifty. We'll take a ten-minute break and come back. All right, we will call the Village Board to order on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five at six P M. I would ask Kelly to note roll call. Um, in announcements, um, the only announcement I have is there's an item on the agenda that's usually in the second meeting of the month. It's updates and so we will, um, have the updates. If you guys have anything from the committees to update, otherwise we will understand that there's not been any or many meetings since the last one time we reported. I don't have any other announcement. Yes, I was going to do that. I guess I did announcements before the pledge. All right, we're going to take a minute to make sure this is taken care of. And while she's doing that, we will um, go on with the recitation of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was waiting. We don't want pornography again. They had it. That same God is trying to control. I'm just not a total idiot. All right, item five, consent agenda. Um, it, does anybody want either item separated? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have any public appearances? Okay. We will go on then to presentations, and this is presentation of a check from the Fourth of July Celebration Beer Tent to the DeForest Lions Club.
Yes, I just quick wanted to, um, I know that we have Guy and Vicky here who are welcome to to come up. Um, but they were just, I know I've already said this before, but um, and Trisha is also here. Um, they were just such a huge help, the Lions this year. Um, the amount of work and volunteers that they got, um, really helped make this event. We have some limitations with what we can do as as village staff and and how many people that you can corral in uh, two days and um, so we're really appreciative and they worked really hard and well-earned, um, the the money that we're giving back to them. So um, yeah, I just thought we'd do a check presentation and since you guys uh, were a part of the decision of us uh, doing this, I thought that you guys could be a part of it so that uh, we can put it on there.
Um, I'd also just like to thank Village for the opportunity. Um, I know we were very excited about the partnership. We're very thankful for the partnership and we look forward to continuing it in the future and uh, helping this terrific uh, community event. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're very, very pleased and.
Here, want us to hold it up?
Hey, I can't give it.
Here, I'll hold it.
I think Bill, which way? Do you want us back there, Bill, or you're asking?
Mine back here.
We'll stand back. We'll stand back.
Come on.
Get up in there.
Can anyone see where was Trisha? Yeah, you need to be.
Let her hold it.
There you go. Judd, you need one with Trisha.
She in?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I appreciate it. I just wanted to say that it's the help of a group like the Lions Club and other volunteer organizations that make our events successful. And um, wouldn't happen without these partnerships. So thank you so much. All right, there is no old business, so we will move to new business. Um, nine point one is discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight oh, a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the project plan for tax incremental District Number Seven, Village of DeForest, Wisconsin. Um, this item was, um, had a memo and some documents in your packet, and I would ask um, Bill if he had anything he wanted to share with us before we.
Yeah, so I can give a presentation on on this and summarize it. Uh, my memo is in the packet. Um, but we can walk through some of these exhibits so that you have an idea of where this is. So this is in our tax increment district number seven. Uh, which has uh, bordered uh, U S Highway fifty-one to the west, Highway nineteen to the south. And includes um, Cooper Corporation, uh, the Frito-Lace Building and uh, several businesses along uh, Loftus and Ridden Roads. Um, so a few things that we're proposing uh, to amend in this version. One is an amendment to the boundary, um, and we're proposing that we remove approximately forty acres, um, in an area that we know by talking to the landowner uh, that will not be developed in the next year. Uh, and that that timeline is important because we have an expenditure deadline coming up here in June of next year. So you see highlighted here on this map, um, this is currently being farmed. And again, uh, talking with the property owner, we understand that there's not going to be any development in that time. So in addition to that, we are proposing that we add two parcels that are currently in Savannah Brooks. So you see these parcels here, this is Merter, Penic, and then there are two empty lots. Um, so we're able to do this because we are removing more value in those forty acres than uh, the value that were added back in to the tax increment district. Uh, these two, even though their future land use, um, as a commercial, um, parcels currently there be farmed and are assessed that way. Um, also, those these two parcels are currently in tax increment district number two. However, we're allowed to put them into a new tax increment district. Uh, what what essentially happens is all the increment created and the value created, uh, which is minimal up to this point would remain in to two. And then any increments created in uh, from the approval of the amendment and into the future, we'll go into to number seven. Um, with this, there was a road connection that connected to this parcel that we're removing and then the southern parcel owned by the same property owner. Uh, we are proposing that that can remove from the property, obviously, because they won't develop um, before next year. And instead, uh, Chad already talked, uh, discussed that, but we will be adding a roundabout, uh, are proposing a roundabout here. That's to prepare for the anticipated traffic that we uh, in talking with the developers in this tax increment district, this pay will be be constructed in this area. Um, other amendments, uh, we did provide a red line version, uh, so you can see all of the uh, changes uh, between amendment number three and number four. One of the significant changes in this amendment you will see is in addition to the budget for business incentives. Uh, and that's to provide um, opportunity for the village to incentivize uh, business development, commercial development uh, in this district in that time. So from now until June, again, provides the opportunity and the capacity to do so out of this this um, project plan, uh, does not obligate it until there is a development agreement for which the village board approves, uh, in the future here and that uh, in the past, we've generally set that off of a a milestone, generally construction, and then the issuance of municipal revenue bond. Generally, again, we we use a pay goal setup uh, for business incentives. Um, this did go to a public hearing on August twenty-sixth at the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were no comments. Uh, planning is in zoning commission, uh, data proven ordinance recommending um, this up M M N to the village board. Your consideration this evening, if you should pass the resolution uh, on the changes here, uh, we are set up to go to the joint review board on Thursday. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions. Bill?
Yeah, are there any verifiable? And I realize you can't disclose that any potential uh, commercial activities that could occur south of nineteen, or is this just?
Yeah, so we, so we uh, are currently in negotiation with a developer who would um, have a significant development uh, in the current hit seven proper, so what's currently included. Uh, plus those parcels south of nineteen. Uh, a different developer we're talking to, um, is interested in the parcels that are adjacent to Highway nineteen to the north of it. Uh, and that's what that roundabout would be helpful, uh, to to induce development there. Um, there are some traffic patterns there that we're concerned about. Uh, if it gets too busy and impacting the stoplights there, and so that free flow of traffic uh, by utilizing that roundabout should be advantageous to the to the businesses.
I realize a roundabout's a better, yeah, and that was before your time. But do you have any idea why a roundabout wasn't put in at that time? It's just ripping up a good intersection.
Yeah, so my under my understanding was that the traffic impact analysis at the time called for it, but the traffic demand wasn't there. Um, generally, we try not to put the infrastructure in until we know that the traffic is coming. In this instance, we know that traffic is coming and and we have the opportunity with the increment that's in the tax increment district currently. Um, and then with the the expenditure deadline coming up quickly here. So, I mean, it it meets, you know, our strategy goes in our in our tax increment districts where um, you know, adding that roundabout, uh, provides a benefit to the tax increment district and then it it also um, eases the scheduling of when this tax increment district ends to stagger those timelines.
I see the need for more traffic. There's going to be more traffic than what was proposed at first.
Yeah, the difference, the the difference in traffic even now, from when that that traffic impacted panelists just happened is significantly different. I don't think that the impact analysis anticipated what is what will be coming or even what's happening into Forest Yards.
So the values have changed.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. I would, I'd just add the roundabout to the south is in Don Tierney's land, and he was much more um, forward thinking, and he he wanted, he 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 wanted the roundabout in immediately. He did that and took that on. Um, I don't think it was warranted there either, but he just said he wanted to do it for that development. So this happening at this point in time is not a surprise.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Jim?
I was just going to add a bit of my history there. The the roundabout to the south was developed when this one was conceptualized and I worked for the surveyor at for that developer at the time. So it was built, the right of way was dedicated in a way that it could be pretty much flipped and built there. Not quite because we didn't have Prestajakomo's land, but for the most part, that was forward thinking on their part at least.
You can see in G I S that if you zoom in there, you can see that most of it outside of the Prestajakomo is is got the right of way for a roundabout there, so.
Okay.
I would like to move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, a motion and a second. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh.
Motion carries. All right, item nine point two. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight one. A resolution authorizing the village president and clerk to execute a revised collateral assignment of development agreement for the Forest Yards development. Mr. Chang?
Yeah, so this is a revised uh, collateral assignment. Uh, this is having to do with, uh, I believe Cascade Development L L C and Park Bank. Um, in regards to uh, the Highway fifty-one improvements. So uh, back in June, the village board approved a collateral assignment of development agreement whereby some of the terms and and obligations were assigned to from Cascade to Park Bank. Included in that were payments also as part of our deal with with Cascade. As you can see in the red line here, since then, Cascade and Park Bank have uh, negotiated or changed some of the terms in the loan from Park Bank to Cascade, namely, um, to to to, let me see that. So they are now not uh, only taking a, they are now only taking a non-revolving line of credit and and no longer taking a letter of credit. Um, and you can see the amounts there. Uh, and then it it removes uh, language regards to application and agreement for the irrecoverable letter of credit. And so those are the minor uh, changes. Again, it doesn't change the original development agreement between us and Cascade. It changes the terms between the lender and the borrower. And since we were the signer, a signer on that original collateral assignment, uh, that's why it's before you again. Anything you want to add?
Okay, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine point three. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight two. Resolution accepting a carbon reduction grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a trail construction project for Highway V, Main Street to River Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Jim?
I just want to bring up one point. I know our comprehensive plan shows a trail to the north side, at least that's my memory of the comprehensive plan. I wanted to, knowing that some of the engineering challenges with the fill slopes and stuff, I want to I would wish, I would say, that going forward that it doesn't say north or south, because I could see that it potentially the trail might be on the south side of V in some instances.
I think we'd want to minimize crossing back and forth on the county highway for a trail segment. Um, and we would probably be consistent since the trail segment runs east of Main Street all along the north side. That's probably the way we would go, um, heading back west. There would be some of those same challenges on the western side and the southern part, uh, when you get down by the dental office, the old uh, restaurant there, that would have some of those same slopes challenges you'll have on the other side. So, um, I think certainly something to to consider. This would happen in twenty twenty eight. Uh, that's when the county, I think, is planning to do highway V west from Main Street to River Road as well. So it kind of ties in with that, that there might be, um, some other offsets or other things that can be done to make this, uh, pretty smooth transition to add that much needed trail segment.
Yep, I don't discount that. I just didn't want to set us up where we have to be on the north side if there was reasons to be on the south. So I thought for the most part, the agreement didn't say north and s- north or south. But there was like one or two times where it said north of V, so that could just be said for later.
Okay. I don't think.
If it warrants, we can come back. I don't think it would affect the grants, um, from the county in in any way that, uh, but if it did, we would have that discussion. But the county's been very amenable and working with us on this carbon reduction grant. It was one that was awarded to us very late and it would have been done actually for the eastern portion of this trail segment, but because we'd already had the bids and accepted the bids, we couldn't accept this grant and we they pivoted and and have been a great partner to work with for us to use this grant. Again, on a a segment that gets people out to a highly desired area that I affectionately call the food court, right? But there's a lot of teenagers and young adults who work out there as well as thirty percent of our population can't even drive. So this facilitates a way for them to get safely out to there.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, Judd, I realize there's a lot of challenges, um, especially by the dental office on both sides. Do you, would you anticipate a bridge, you know, like on our trail system? To instead of, it's gonna be difficult because that's quite a slope. And a bridge or, I don't know, what do you call it, uh, suspended?
Boardwalk, kind of like.
Boardwalk type thing would be a possibility on a certain section.
Potentially, um, we we have a very rough preliminary plan with, uh, our engineers that's been put in place. Um, that's not a consideration at this point, um, but
There's a couple.
Those are, uh, a boardwalk, an elevated boardwalk is not inexpensive either, right?
Right.
Um, and then you have so I, it, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, variables we have to wait out before we get to that point.
It's a lot of challenges. Thank you.
All right. The motion? And the second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I just would say good job on pivoting. It is not easy to get grants. It's not easy to get them to change the terms and conditions of grants. So I just wanted to say congratulations and good job on that. And thank you for thinking about our kiddos, our teens, and making sure that they have safe ways to get around this beautiful community.
Yeah, I would add when when that gets done, that will be just amazing connection and really complete a lot of systems. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Nine point four. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three one. An ordinance approving a three lot cer- certified survey map dividing parcel number zero nine one zero dash one eight four dash eight one nine one dash four located north of South Street and south of Campbell Hill Court in the Village of DeForest.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty five zero three one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Can we put that map up on the? I just want to get the visual in my mind again.
Do you want the certified survey map or do you want?
A visual for the actual map.
Where is it?
G I S map.
Yes, thank you. I think I know where this is at. I just want to make sure I'm.
It's the old where the horse was on South Street. They have a large garden area. They're on South Street now.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. With that, we'll go to item ten. Communication to check register was in your packet. Um, committee, commission and board reports, as I noted, this was not usually, uh, it is not usually on our agenda for the first meeting, but we can do updates if people are chomping at the bit. So I'll run through them quickly. The library?
Uh, we don't, we don't have an update from last meeting. We got a meeting next week. Uh, just, I forgot to mention last meeting, the dragons came down from the roof to get fixed. They're gonna go back up. And the community was concerned, but they're going back up.
Okay. The Forest Public Safety Commission, was there anything? Did you meet?
No, we meet next week.
Um, community and senior center?
We did not meet, but I do, um, we are having a special meeting this Friday, September fifth regarding, um, legal updates on what's happening with the organizational structure. So that'll be the Village of Windsor, us and Vienna.
Okay. Community Development Authority? We didn't meet? Next, next week. Planning and zoning commission?
Aline graciously ran the meeting, so that was nice for me. And a couple of things we did was the couple of things that was on the village board meeting tonight, the amendment number four to tid number seven. And also the three lot C S M, that was the nine point four on this agenda. And the final thing that was not on the village board agenda is that we had a a final development plan and a C S M for a multi-family development along River Road. So directly across the street from Athletic Complex, three buildings. I forget how many units. I want to say seventy five, but I don't remember, but anyway, I thought it was a very well-developed plan. And what I hear from staff that that developer's been easy to work with, so great deal.
Public Services Committee? Um, I don't think they met.
They didn't have a meeting, sorry.
The Forest Windsor Fire and EMS, we meet. We meet tomorrow, so, um, the committee, commission and board minutes are in your packet. Um, I wanted to note, there's a couple of D C C B A meetings coming up. Um, the Windsor one is next week Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, yeah, so that's that's an in-person meeting. They will be, um, touring, uh, Windsor Village Hall and then I believe they have, uh, presenters from the the Clean Water Alliance presenting.
And then the one we're doing is is in a Zoom meeting the following month?
I believe that's in November.
Yeah.
So that's a virtual meeting and, uh, basically it's we're hosting that one and we'll be, uh, showcasing all of the development in town here.
All right. And with that, I would ask if there's any other business to come before the board? And if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on one end and a second here.
Always one wins.
That Callie? I heard you go and then I'm getting.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Twenty-nine.
Meetings adjourned at six twenty-nine P M.
Geez, that's why I hesitated.